The meeting of, the business meeting of September 26. President. The pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. Please call the roll.
Monica Duran.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Present.
And, um, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Wooden excused herself for this evening, and I want to tell you, um, we, we do have a quorum, and don't worry much about what you say tonight because a hundred million people are watching something else.
Oh, that's okay. More than our show.
Yeah. Why didn't we put hot topics on, huh?
Yeah, we should have had some hot topics. Okay, then, I'm, um, are there any changes or additions to the minutes of September 12th or study session notes of August 1st? Hearing none, they stand approved as presented. Moving to proclamations and ceremonies, uh, we don't have any tonight, but we do have some, uh, citizens, uh, have requested to speak. Usually Jerry Dahl brings that up to me. You, you have to go get it.
Where's Jerry? Oh, yeah, we knew he was gonna come. Is that vacation or something? No, it's in the meeting. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, your first time here is, is official. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a few people here standing, starting with Dan McMinimy. Starting with... Dan, will you give us a description of where you live or...
I live on 9789 West Cambridge Place in Littleton, Colorado.
Thank you.
Can you say your name, please, and spell your last name?
It's Dan McMinimy, M.C., capital M.I.N.I.M.E.E.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor J, members of the council. I'm Dan McMinimy, Superintendent of Schools for Jefferson County. I'm here on my personal time tonight to share information about the upcoming mill and bond election and ask for your support. Our community expects and deserves to have excellent schools. Our kids deserve to have outstanding teachers and support staff, great facilities, and the resources necessary to learn and grow to their full potential. We're having a hard time meeting those expectations. To understand our need, let's start out with a little background. State funding is abysmal. Colorado is 40th in the nation, roughly $2,200 per student less than the national average. If we were funded at the national average, we would have another $190 million per year to spend on our students, staff, and facilities. For the past two years, I've worked with 177 other superintendents across the state to lobby the legislature for adequate funding with virtually no success. This fall, you are seeing the results of this lack of progress, as across Colorado, a record number of school districts, 50 and counting at this point, are going out to their communities for bonds and mills. Current state funding is simply not adequate to deliver on the promise of a high-quality public education. Let's talk about our competitiveness with the front-range school districts. Of 13 major districts around us, we are second in size at 86,000 kids. We're second in the number of schools at 155. We're ninth out of 13 in per pupil revenue from the state. That's $500 less than Denver. That's about $43 million when you factor in $100 across our student population equates to about $8.6 million. So $43 million less than Denver in per pupil funding. We're sixth of 13 in mill levy override per student at roughly $800 less than Boulder or another $64 million. We're 13th out of 13 in bond dollars per student. If we had the same bond dollars per student as Denver, we'd have $977 million more to spend on our facilities. If we had the same bond dollars as Boulder per student, we'd have 100, $1.15 billion to spend on our facilities. As you can imagine, this creates a tremendous disparity and lack of competitiveness in our ability to attract and retain staff, to provide resources and opportunities for our students, and have the facilities necessary to provide a safe, high-quality experience for our kids. We have 155 schools. The average building in Jefferson County is 45 years old. We have 239 portables used to manage students at our elementary schools. Only five of those were built after 1988. Virtually all of our schools have long overdue needs in terms of repairs and improvement. The $535 million bond is about providing safe and high-quality learning environments for our students and staff, extending the life of existing schools, and better utilization of current district facilities. In Wheat Ridge alone, $35 million will be spent on schools, including a major renovation at Everett Middle School, a new Prospect Valley, and Wheat Ridge High School Phase II of the master plan. As a community, you've seen the revitalization of Stevens Elementary School and the opening of Sebeski Academy. We should be proud of those school environments we've provided for our students. We've exhausted virtually every avenue to continue to provide the quality of education from all, that we all expect for our students to receive from our district. We need to work together for the common good, for our students, for our future. Last week, the City of Golden endorsed 3A, 3B unanimously. In closing, I'm here tonight asking you for your support of Jeffco 3A, 3B. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McMinimy. Griff Worth.
Hi, Griff Worth, G.R.I.F.F.W.I.R.T.H. and 14390 West 30th Avenue, Golden. So I too am here as a citizen tonight. Um, you know, I'm the principal at Wheat Ridge High School, but I wanted to come in and also express my interest in having your support for the bond and mill. I don't have all of the district numbers that you just heard, but what I do have is the perspective of our local schools and Wheat Ridge and Wheat Ridge High School in particular. We heard that the average school in Jefferson County is about 45 years old. In Wheat Ridge, we're at about 49 years old. If we factor out Stevens, which is 22, it goes up from there. Wheat Ridge High School specifically is 60 years old. It's not falling down, but it is a school that was built in 1956, and much of it still is built for students and the world that we taught and learned in, in 1956. So there are some serious, um, challenges with that, and how we want to teach, uh, teach kids in the 21st century is significantly different than it was 60 years ago. So I guess that would be my plea on the bond. As far as the mill goes, um, you know, at times it feels as a principal at a school, much like we're in the minor leagues right now in Jefferson County. We're developing talent, and then we watch a lot of our talent leave because, as you heard, other school districts do have more mill levy money, they do have more funds, and so we know the minor league never can compete with the major leagues. We develop talent, and the most talented people that we have, um, go to the big leagues, and that doesn't feel good as a principal. I want to keep my best talent. I want my best talent to thrive, and I want them to nourish our kids the way they deserve. The other part of that mill that really is important, at Wheat Ridge High School, as you guys all know, and you've supported, and I need to thank you, you guys have been very supportive of Wheat Ridge High School, and I do appreciate that. We're moving forward pretty fast with developing different pathways that are good for all kids. You guys have seen presentations from our STEM and STEAM classes, you've been a part of those processes, and you've seen the great work that kids can do when they're challenged with the 21st century learning. We're continuing to do that with the construction program, we're working on our health sciences and our IT pathways. We recently have hooked up with Career Wise, Career Wise Colorado, that's gonna help us provide, um, internships, apprenticeships for our students, again, so we can engage them in the world as adults. I see the mill monies as, as an important part of that. If we want to continue to provide the same outstanding college preparation programs, as well as career path programs for all of our students, we need to have that money to take care of kids. Thank you, I appreciate your support, and I appreciate you letting me speak to you tonight.
You bet. Ally LaSalle. So.
I'm Ally LaSalle. I live at 14070 Foothill Circle, Golden, in the Applewood neighborhood. My name is Ally, I live in Applewood. I've got two Jeffco students, and I am the first Vice President of the Jefferson County School Board. Good evening, Mayor J, and Wheat Ridge City Council. My fellow Jeffco board members and I voted unanimously to ask Jeffco voters for more funding for our schools, meaning you'll see a $33 million mill levy override and a $535 million bond issue on your November ballot. Jeffco's needs are great and well-defined by our staff. Jeffco Public Schools includes 12 million square feet of space. Our 155 schools' median age is 45 years. We have not invested in new square footage since 2004, bond, that's 12 years. Now we must protect prior taxpayers' investments while accommodating new growth. Voter approval for the bond will enable us to upgrade safety and security in our school buildings, make long overdue repairs and improvements to 110 schools, renovate or expand 45 schools, build four replacement schools and three new schools in high-growth areas, and ensure Jeffco students have access to updated technology when they're learning. If voters approve the mill levy override, we will be able to offer competitive salaries to attract and retain our best teachers, ensure our students thrive in 21st century classrooms that prepare them for college and careers by expanding programs such as STEM, STEAM, art, music, career, and technology, increase safety and security, and mental health services in all elementary schools. Jeffco is nearly one of 50 school districts across Colorado, asking voters to approve additional funding. Why so many? In 2009, Colorado began cutting K-12 funding through the creation of the negative factor, costing Jeffco alone $80 million a year. The economy's recovered, property taxes have increased, yet school funding still hasn't risen. In fact, our people funding, per people funding this year is the same as it was in 2007 and in 1988. Jeffco students are worth the investment, and the return on the investment is incredible. Last year alone, our graduating seniors received $86 million in scholarship offers. Four Jeffco high schools made U.S. News &amp; World's report top 20 list. Two Jeffco high schools were amongst Newsweek's Top 500 in the country. Seven 2016 Jeffco graduates were named Daniel Scholars, while two others received the Betcher Foundation Scholarship. Jeffco teachers, students, and staff regularly receive recognition for academic and extracurricular achievements. If we want to continue the traditions of excellence that define Jeffco schools, we've got to invest in our school district. I am asking you, as leaders of our community, to pass a resolution endorsing our bond and mill initiative. This is not a partisan issue. This is about our collective civic responsibility to educate tomorrow's leaders, employees, employers, and future residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Krenk, K-R-E-N-K-K, it looks like.
Good evening. I'm trying, going to try and make this short. My name's Alan Krenk. I live at 2635 Pierce. That's A-L-A-N-K-R-E-N-E-K. I'd like to take a, a couple minutes to get the council members to do some thinking, and I'd like to put a scenario together. Say there's two people in a household, and you go on, off on a three-week vacation, which is, is, could be a common occurrence. In that three weeks, somebody sends you something in the mail. You aren't there to receive it. You know nothing about it. Meanwhile, they have an abatement hearing against you. Okay? You're, to, to find out about this, you've come back from vacation, and your second car has a car cover on it. So you talk to the police department, and you want to know what's going on. Police department doesn't know. I head to the police department, run license plates, to see if they were valid. Police department comes back and says they were valid. On the, the next day, I was, I talked to the, the code enforcement sergeant, because I believe McKenna and a couple other employees are no longer with us. And I tried to explain what was going on, and she says, "Well, there is an abatement against you." I said, "An abatement?" I went down to the court to find out what the abatement was. I couldn't even find out from the court. I had a meeting with the sergeant, and found she gave me the paperwork, which I have some of it in these packets that I'm going to give you. Supposedly this was the, it was sent certified, uh, notice the first, and I believe it was the 17th. I, I don't remember what, what day it was, because I was never informed. And even in the, the packet, I show UPS tracking sheet saying when it was received or what, and what happened to it. And even the, from the court, the abatement notice, or the, what the, the city can do, tells me that I have, they're going to go back in and cut down weeds, trees, et cetera, that are on city property, and they're going to charge me. They came in and put a car cover on my car, on a legally licensed vehicle that the police department checked on their radio and verified that it's legal.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Don Lombardi.
Just, um, he gave me these packets before, um, the meeting, so I'll hand those out, and there's one for the city manager as well, for all of you and the mayor, so.
Will you also be scanning them and sending them? Can you scan it as well? Because I know a lot of us keep an electronic file. I think we've made that request, so can you scan the packet and send it to us as well, just so we have it?
Okay.
Lombardi.
Good evening. I'm Don Lombardi.
Yeah.
L-O-M-B-A-R-D-I, 433 South Allison Parkway, Lakewood. Uh, I am the fire chief at West Metro Fire Rescue, and here in my official capacity, to remind everyone about the upcoming election, special election we're having October 4th. It is for all Wheat Ridge residents and, um, for, um, property owners in Wheat Ridge, in Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District. And this is, uh, to, there'll be two questions on the ballot. The ballot will be a walk-in election, um, that will be held at, um, Fire Station 16 over here at 3880 Upham Street, and Wheat Ridge Fire Station 17 at 10901 West 38th Avenue, also at the City of Edgewater, and that'll be at the Recreation Center at 5845 West 25th Avenue. Two questions that'll be on there. Um, we're asking, uh, that the voters come in and vote on both questions. It's a little bit confusing. The first question, it will say Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, and in essence, it'll ask, "Do you want to dissolve, um, the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District?" The second ques, and that's about, that's, uh, question, uh, ballot question A. There's also another ballot, uh, question A, it says, "West Metro Fire Protection District, ballot question A." And that's where it gets a little bit confusing. The, the voters will, um, we're asking to vote on both. The second question will say, "Do you want to include into the West Metro Fire Protection District?" So it's a little bit confusing, uh, um, we don't, the, uh, election officials there will be able to explain, uh, that we're asking you vote on both, um, and hopefully that'll end some confusion on there. But it's a walk-in election, polls open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and, um, we should know that night, uh, early the next day on the results of that, so. Just wanted to give everybody a reminder that October 4th coming up.
Thank you for bringing that into us.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Carolyn Durant. Oh, there's Carolyn.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Doran, 2500 Car Court in Lakewood, and I am here tonight as the Events Manager for Local Works, and I just wanted to come and thank the city for their support of Ridge Fest. Uh, it was a wonderful event with 6,000 attendees. We had beautiful weather that day, wonderful bluegrass music all afternoon, great local beer, great local food, and a lot of fun kids' activities. So, um, just all in all, it was, it was a great day, and a lot of people had fun, and it was truly a great community event that really showcased everything that Wheat Ridge has to offer. So thank you.
I believe it was our pleasure to attend.
It was a pleasure to work it.
Thank you. Colleen O'Brien.
I'm Colleen O'Brien, and I'm here as a citizen, and I'd like to see the city take more steps towards environmental...
Yes.
Yes. All right.
Colleen, give us your address.
3002 Eaton Street.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to see the city take more steps towards environmental sustainability. As a whole, we're falling behind our neighbors in Golden, Lakewood, and Denver. It would be great to see Wheat Ridge provide more resources and incentives to encourage environmentally friendly practices by residents, businesses, and developers, and I encourage everyone to look at Lakewood's Sustainability Plan and efforts for inspiration ideas. I feel like they're leading the way in Denver metro area. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Moore, followed by John Clark.
Mayor J, council, my name is Roger Moore, and I live at 3550 Miller Court, R-O-G-E-R, M-O-R-I-N. I'd like to make five comments about Chief Brennan's annual report on crime presented to council on 12 September. First, I think the chief has a vital perspective to shaping community discussions and city council decisions. I wish it was easier for citizens to watch his presentation than search for it nearly two hours into a regular city council session. My request to the clerk is that, if permissible, minutes include a link to tap on or click on to watch the chief's presentation, or really any presentation that in the, in the clerk's assessment meets a threshold of high community importance. Two, to the chief's comment that crime in Wheat Ridge is increasing, as crime in the, uh, in the region increases, I have two thoughts. First, please use whatever leverage you have to regional leaders to figure out why the change is and what can be done. And two, publish and be clear about what distinguishes Wheat Ridge from other municipalities, what sets us apart. Ultimately, I would hope that we could buffer ourselves from negative, uh, regional trends. I know, easier said than done, but I urge council to think about it. Three, that our high school had a 13% increase in possession of marijuana. Charges raise the significance concern, concerns for student safety, the quality of learning, and by extension, our city reputation. Perhaps because of my own family situation, I've always thought kids and families were our city's stock and trade. I believe that teens are the population most at risk for engaging in risky behaviors, and I think that making marijuana more available increases opportunity for it to be abused. I ask council to please put the option on the table to ban marijuana facilities in the city. Open the topic, please. Four, I think I completely underestimate the potential harm of heroin and meth in our society, in our city. I want to learn more. Uh, thank you, chief, for alerting me. And five, to one council member's comment about what can be done to help, I offer this suggestion, because I'd like to know myself. Ask the chief if time and resources were not limitations, what would he want to see for his department? But since time and resources are limitations, what are his priorities? This is, the city would make records of the chief's unconstrained needs and his priorities, and we would fund the priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. And John Clark.
How quick I made it here. John Clark, 4665 Swadley Street. Um, tonight I just have a couple questions that I think are probably worth asking. After looking at the ballot issue in the upcoming election, I thought we probably have a lot more to worry about than tonight's debate. Starting with Amendment 69, state issue, increases revenue about approximately $25 billion, with a B, and that word always scares me. Um, each year nearly doubles the state budget of $27 billion every single year. Move on to Amendment 72, also a state issue. Uh, that one increases tax revenue approximately $299 million every year by tripling cigarette taxes. And all that is excluded from the rev, all those revenue proceeds are excluded from Tabor spending limits. On the county side, as we heard tonight, we have 3A and 3B, whereas Jeffco Schools wants to, uh, bond 535, approximately $535 million, pay it back over 15, 20 years. Um, the Department of Wildlife even got in on this and supports doubling my hunting and fishing fees. So instead of 35, next year it'll be 70 to go fishing. Uh, 4B asks us to vote yes to continue, and that's the key word in this one, is to continue a sales tax that raises approximately $38 million more dollars per year for 12 years for a total of $456 million in tax revenue for the SCFD. And now Wheat Ridge wants to borrow $33 million and pay interest on that for 12 years to fund four dirt projects on 2E. So that's when I had to ask, how much is enough? How much does government think we make? Where do we vote yes? And where do we vote no? Do we support the schools and vote yes on 3A, 3B? Vote no on 2? We don't know. It's just way too much money. So back in 2012, we were all told to vote yes... So back in 2012, we were all told to vote yes on Amendment 64. I'm sure Roger remembers that one. I'm sure you guys all remember that one. And at this point, I think I could probably loan the city the $33 million that they're looking for if I only had a nickel for every time I heard, "Think about the tax money, John. It's not about legalizing pot, is it? It's about the tax money. It's all the tax money from the sales of pot. This will be huge," I was told. Well, they fooled enough people with all that great tax revenue hype in '64 passed. And in the years since, I haven't seen any tax relief. No lower income tax, sales tax, property tax, and no money to my kids' schools, no money to these guys' schools. And now four short years later, we all want more. So my questions to think about are, how much is enough? And where is all that pot money? Maybe something we can all think about tonight on the way home.
Thank you, John. I believe that's all we have for public comment tonight, and I see none for any specific issues. So I believe we can go forward. Thank you for coming. I believe we can go forward with a regular meeting. I don't believe there's any changes to the agenda, so let's start with the consent agenda. Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda, item A, motion to approve payment to insight public sector in the amount of $76,958.42 for the annual renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. B, motion to award a contract to American Facility Services Group Lakewood, Colorado in an amount, in an annual amount of $88,524.57 for professional cleaning services. And resolution, excuse me, and consent agenda C, resolution number 41-2016 authorizing submittal of a 2017 application for a Colorado State Recreation Trails grant for the reconstruction of Clear Creek Trail in Johnson Park. Is a motion in order?
Motion would be in order.
I move to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second, please.
Second?
Second by Ms. Hoppy. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number two, Mr. Matthews.
Item two. Council Bill Number 22-2016, ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 26-615 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning commercial mobile radio service and adding conforming amendments in connection therewith. Case Number ZO816-04. Issue, the ordinance repeals and reenacts Section 26-615 regarding commercial mobile radio service regulations, more commonly referred to as cellular communication towers. These facilities are permitted throughout the City of Wheat Ridge, but the regulations have not been updated since 2001, and revisions are needed to align the code with current technology and FCC regulations.
Thank you, Larry. This is first reading, which usually means that we read it basically to post it for public comment or public, public color comment at the date of second reading, which will be 10/10. So at this point, we would ask for a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 22-2016, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 46-615 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning commercial mobile radio service and adding conforming amendments in connection therewith on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for Monday, October 10, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers, and that'd take effect 15 days after final publication.
Thank you. And with that, we're casting the vote.
Second.
I didn't get a second, sorry.
Second.
Seconded. Thank you, Ms. Durant. Seconded. Now cast your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Once again, we have a motion, excuse me, a council bill for first reading. Ms. Davis?
A council bill Number 23-2016, an ordinance amending Section 26-711 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning billboards to establish a billboard vacancy process. Case Number ZO8-16-05. At issue, the city's billboard regulations are located in Article 7 of Chapter 26 in the city code, specifically in Section 26-711. Billboard specifications and regulations per Section 28-711(c), only 16 billboards are permitted within the City of Wheat Ridge. The enclosed ordinance codifies an existing administrative policy that outlines the process for declaring, advertising, and filling billboard vacancies.
Thank you. Once again, this is for first reading, so we're just setting the date, and please give us a motion.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 23-2016, an ordinance amending Section 26-711 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning billboards to establish a billboard vacancy process on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for Monday, October 10, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers, and that'd take effect 15 days after final publication.
Thank you. And may we have a second on that one?
Second.
Seconded by George Pond. Please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
We do have a very short meeting tonight, so we're going to move on. Our city manager isn't here. Ken, are you, Ken Johnson, you asking us?
I am, and I don't have any, anything to add.
Nothing to say. Nothing to say. This is your opportunity.
Nothing to debate?
Nothing to debate or, city attorneys matters. Ah, we have a substitute tonight.
How about that? Ditto. I would just repeat what Ken said. It's nice to see your faces. I haven't met a couple of you. Larry, I met you on the way in, Councilor Matthews, I should say, Councilor Durant. Formerly introduced myself to you after the meeting. It's nice to see you all, and you, Councilor Hoppy. I haven't met you in person either. I'll talk with you post-meeting before we dash out of here, but just nice to be here, and thanks for tolerating me instead of Jerry.
You don't know how much we tolerate, we tolerate Jerry.
Yeah, it might go the other way around.
Elected officials matters. Let's start with our city clerk.
He had a couple things, welcome to Ms. Barry for, Barry for, I'm glad there wasn't anything controversial that you got struck with. Some legal thing. A couple of things, I wanted to inform people, if you haven't had a chance, to go out to the Taj Mahal. There is quite a nice display of oil paintings painted outdoors by artists, and the scenes are from open space properties all over Jefferson County. The White Ranch and Pine Cone, this, and Crown Hill is in there. There's, there's one of Crown Hill, and they're big, big oil paintings. And there's going to be an event and an auction Saturday after next. Anyway, this, this particular style of painting where the artist is outdoors is called plein air. It's P-L-E-I-N, air. And next week, there's a schedule, and these artists, 25 artists are going to be at various open space locations all day. There's a Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday. And Thursday, they're going to be at Crown Hill from sunup to sundown. And so if any council members or anybody out there, if that's your day to walk, if you walk Crown Hill, be sure to go on Thursday and catch the artists. And if you don't walk Crown Hill, then you should on that day. So Thursday, October 6th. Then, oh, the other thing, in doing the minutes from the last meeting, I wanted to, when you had your discussion about the special event permits, I wanted to add in that it's actually the, the city clerk's office, specifically the deputy clerk, that reviews the liquor applications for the special events permits. Those permits come in to the deputy, that's part of his job description. And he reviews those, works with the state and all of that. And then if there's issues, like big things, like the Carnation Festival, obviously, then the police department, you know, gets, comes in on it too, or something big like Ridge Fest. But for, just in general, special event liquor permits aren't reviewed by the police department. They're reviewed by the deputy city clerk. And along that line, and I don't know, Carmen, if you're going to be able to answer this, but, and it's just something to put out there. The state recently changed the requirements for the payment of special event permits. Currently, the existing plan is that when, when any 501(c)(3) gets a special events permit, it could be the Sons of Italy, it could be Local Works, it could be the Carnation Festival, anybody, when they get a special events permit, the, the optimists or the Rotary Club, they have to pay $25 to the city and $25 to the state. What changed was the state said, you don't have to give us the $25, you can keep it for yourself. And so the question that Robin Eaton and I have been talking about is, what is the process for changing the policy to keep the extra $25? Instead of 25 to the city and 25 to the state, we can keep the whole 50. And what has to happen? And I don't know the answer to that. What is the ans, how do we make that happen? Is it something that goes to council? Can we just do it administratively? What? And you don't have to have the answer tonight, but it's something that we'd like to talk about, and it's a little bit of extra revenue that we could get.
Sure, sure. No, and if I might, Madam Mayor, if I could respond, sure. I'm happy to look at that, city clerk, and I, my gut reaction is, is it's probably an administrative thing we can handle if that's just the manner or an issue of how a fee that we take in is, is processed. If, however, a fee schedule that council approves by some sort of formal action like resolution says $25 fee for the city, $25 fee to the state of Colorado, we would probably bring council a resolution to amend that. So I'll, I'm happy to look into that with you and the deputy clerk.
Yeah, because the way it is now, they, the state just sends us a list of all the various, what this license cost, and they range from in the hundreds to 75, buck 280, you know, there, some of them are quite, quite reasonable. And if that changes, we just change the amount. And so, you know, I just wondered how much, how many hoops did we have to jump through to change that policy? And if council's okay with doing it administratively, we'd like to take that extra money.
Thank you, Carmen. If you can help on that, I'll be just getting.
That's all. Thank you.
Want to start out here? Durant?
Thank you. What I'd like to give is the list of locations for the West Metro Wheat Ridge Fire Board election, or fire election that's on October 4th. First location is Wheat Ridge Fire Station 16 at 3880 Uplum Street in Wheat Ridge. Second location is Wheat Ridge Fire Station 17, which is at 10901 West 38th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. And the last location is the City of Edgewater. It is at 5845 West 25th Avenue in Edgewater. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Hoppy?
No, thank you.
I know you wanted to read the preamble. Miss.
Yeah, I thought we spent a couple hours waxing on about the Constitution. We got nothing else going on tonight, right? We can just kind of hang out and. I do want to mention that the Cool Duo 5K is happening on this Saturday at 9:00. That kicks off at 39th and Pierce Street, and encourage everybody to come out for that. That does run through the neighborhood and around Randall Park and back, so should be a fun time for all. And that there are a couple other 5Ks coming up, so check the Parks and Rec website for some more 5Ks coming up as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to introduce or remind everyone that we have a coffee with counsel in District 3. It's going to be on October 8th at the Rec Center on a Saturday morning from 9:30 to 11:00. Please join Councilman Fitzgerald and I to answer questions and for us to listen to what's going on in District 3. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Mr. Johnstone, can we post the locations on our website if we're not allowed to? Or can we post the election information on our website?
Me, for the fire?
Yeah, for the fire department.
I haven't been in the loop on that one, but I can certainly check and verify that.
Yeah, it would just be nice to be able to post it, just because, you know, if someone doesn't have their pin in their hand right there, that we could.
If they can't, they could go to the Wheat Ridge Fire District website, and it has them right there. But I think I had asked about that, but if you'll reconfirm.
I'll reanswer.
If we can or can't. Yeah, I think just the more options that people can look it up in different places, the better, since it's walk-in. That's like 1960ers. Thank you. Nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes. Friday night, I had the privilege and opportunity to ride along with Wheat Ridge PD, and I would continue to urge all of our citizens to continue to give them the great support they're already receiving, and even more so in these difficult times, because they richly deserve it. We have a fine group of people.
We do. Are you going to ride, or you've already have?
Yeah.
You already did. Yeah, I've done that myself. It's astounding how much, how dedicated and the kind of concentration they put on for hours and hours. I really respect them. I get to do the last say, which is Coffee with the Mayor on Saturday morning at Velena's, Venola's, excuse me, at 9:00 a.m. That's this Saturday. Hope to see some people there. And I believe that's all we have for tonight, and adjourn.